You coming out today and getting to know the candidates. We also appreciate the Marion business community and the Marion Chamber members for submitting lots of great questions in advance. We are going to attempt to get through all of those questions that were submitted in advance within the hour. And then only then will we be able to take questions from the audience. Questions are going to be limited to those that are commanded by both candidates. So we cannot be singling out a single candidate to ask a specific question. The candidates will be given a minute and a half to answer each of the questions. And I also want to let you know that we are videotaping this event today. So that will be available at our Chamber website via YouTube after we wrap up. Also want to thank Snooks and Nick today for taking time out of their days so that we can get a chance to get to know them a little better. It's a very important election for our community. So with that, we're going to go ahead and get started.
That means I'm first. I think I lost my thought, so.
Yes, so first of all, let's see if I can look in. Yeah, first of all, they're going to take some time to just tell you a little bit about themselves, about their platform. And then we'll start in with the official questions. We've flipped a coin in advance also. And Nick lost the toss, I guess, so Snooks gets to go first.
Good morning. Snooks Bush is the name. Started out a long time ago, back in 67. I graduated from a little college in Northern California, Chico State College. I didn't realize it at the time, but for three years it was an all one party school grading my playboy. I thought it was normal. I got out there in 67 and went right into Navy. Got into the flight program. And then flew in the Far East up until 75. I got out there and got into a crop dicking company, bought it at Ford, and expanded it to 12. Pretty good operation. Northern California raises a lot of rice. And so we had these 11 aircraft, along with 38 other aircraft in the county. We never left the county. After 10 years of working seven days a week, never seen family fall asleep in the airplane. He crashed about five times. I thought it might be good and did do something else. So I sold the company. And at that time, I was in the Navy Reserves. I was a commanding officer of a unit on the West Coast. And there was another commanding officer who was the director for the Coors Brewing Company. He invited me to join Coors, come out to the Midwest. So I came out with a marketing position. Five states, 75 distributors. For someone that has a degree in biology and physics and agronomy and was far off from marketing. They thought, oh my God, they hired a crop duster to handle this business. But I worked seven days a week there too. Even though they were closed, they still had deliveries and met people on weekends. And after about a year and a half, I was able to maintain market share with these distributors. Distributor in town was flexible. And one of the first operations that we did was put together a package called Cedar Rapids store bullets. And I was coming to go. And that started a pretty good rise in market share for Coors. And after a while, everyone thought that I was a guru and wanted me to move, go to Dallas, New York, open different operations. And so I quit in the Dairy Queen. We've been in Dairy Queen for 20 years now. We started the secondary queen down at 1100, down across from Walmart. Ran after six years again, seven days a week. Well, Picky was at the other store seven days a week. So you can see that we can't stand more than two stores. There's only two of us. And after that, we sold that other store about six, seven years ago. So we're back. And the old store are operating with our daughters. Our daughters purchased it from us and we're down there on a volunteer basis every day. When I decided to run for this mayor position, obviously that was something that I'd never done before. Never been in politics, but I did it on people. And when you see something that you believe in, you wouldn't jump into it. And I jumped into everything wholeheartedly. And so here we are, old feet, and look what I got into. One of the first things we found out was my daughter challenged my residency here. I had that all figured out. Once I showed them my first certificate, all she understood, everything was fine. We purchased a house here too. I haven't, oh, I found it after a couple of days. I was looking on 14th Avenue, 28th Avenue. And Picky said, gee, it's easy to find, it's got a sign in the front yard. Well, I finally found it on, I think it's 24th. So we have a house there on 24th too. My daughter Lori said, gee Dad, that's pretty slick. You're going to have to custody of the dog on weekend. I thought that was helpful to me. Anyway, but to get along, to get serious about this, there's lots of things. I mean, an individual doesn't know, he'd like to do a lot of things, you know, once you're elected. But in reality, you only want a position and you need a lot of help. And it's a political situation. So if you're elected, you have to negotiate lots of different positions. So certainly there's things that an individual would like to see done. You know, I'd like to see the budget go farther. I'd like to take a look at the budget, take a look at the spending policies of the city. So that these, so the money can go a little bit farther. One of the things that, you know, really stands out is the fact that we've got a lot of capital projects that we're spending a lot of money on. And projects in the future that we would spend money on. You know, in the future, we're talking about a police station, a city services building. We need to expand the library. We've got a big project on the North Side. The Tower Terrace project, which is an incredible project. Once that gets tied in with Cedar Rapids, Robbins, and High Waltham. Get that interchange, if they can ever get that off the deck and get that interchange running. It would really help the people on the North Side of the city. Give us a good east-west route. Plus, expand our economics on the North Side. We could have a great economic area out there, more housing. But it's really the transportation that would help us have a lot. There's an awful lot of expansion if you go up there with that Tower Terrace. And I'd like to see that happen. One of the, you know, I believe in the future of this city. I mean, I've been here for 20 years now. But I've also invested my own money. I mean, over the years, I've invested a little over $2 million buying and selling houses, businesses, and the properties. And we've always had, for the last 13 years, we've always had one or two houses that we've had refurbished and sold. And businesses too. In fact, a couple of months ago, I started another business in, I mean, it's a wholesale ice cream business. Fill in the void of some of the things that Dairy Queen couldn't fix. So I'm here for the long haul. And I'd like to be able to say that, hey, I could contribute to this city and make it go. One of the, one of the things that I feel that is lacking is we need some common sense in a lot of our government situations here. We think, or I think, that the 7th Avenue situation could be done, and could have been done a lot different. Unfortunately, the city didn't bring the business community in on the negotiating for the 7th Avenue project on the initial basis.
Mr. Buska, we are over five minutes for opening remarks. I apologize, I didn't set a time limit for that. But if you could wrap it up in the next 60 seconds so we can move on with the official questions, that'd be great. Thanks.
Well, I've only got two, three more pages to fill. But, you know, let's talk about library trails to Tower Terrace, the Uptown streetscape along Park. All those are very important. And I think that the Chamber of Commerce has got a great program here with this imagination. And it needs all the support that we can give it. Obviously, funding is a big question. And once we get all that figured out, then away we go.
Thank you.
I would have talked, I would have talked just as long without a timeline. So it's just, no, we are. Thank you for being here this afternoon. My name is Nick Glue. And I am just thrilled to have the honor of being able to run for mayor. Because I think our community is truly at a crossroads right now. We have been working extremely hard with different stakeholders across the entire community, including our citizens, to put a plan in place. It's a plan that covers a variety of different topics that I'm sure we'll talk about through questions that come up in the next hour. That really are all about continuing a path of progress here in our community. A little bit about myself. My wife, Erica and I live in Marion, on the North Side of town. My wife's a lifelong resident. Grew up here her entire life with her family that still lives along 29th Avenue. We have a young daughter who's three years old. And we're expecting another child here in a couple of months. So it's a busy time in our household. But I think that, you know, that having a young family, as we, as I've been on the City Council for the last four years. And we realize that this is our community and it's our future that really we talk about every day as the City Council up here. Having a young family, knowing the business community, knowing the variety, being involved in the community in a variety of ways. Is really what drives me to continue to work together with all these people and move our community forward. My background is communications and marketing. I graduated from the University of Northern Iowa. It's probably, I guess that was in 1997. My first job out of school was as a journalist for a ZF family of companies years ago. I took a slight detour in my communications marketing journey. And I was in banking, was a commercial lender for six years with a locally owned bank. And then most recently, I got back into the marketing and communications field again with a local company, which I think is very important. As we work with local businesses to allow them to grow and thrive in our community. The theme of, if you would have a theme for my campaign, it's as simple as focus on leading our community down a path of steady and continuous improvement. I'm not a person that's going to get in office and say, we are 100% on the wrong track and need to right the ship. I think we have spent the last four years positioning this community for greatness in a variety of ways. Whether it's economic development, whether it's community development, whether it's spending more resources on our streets, which is always the number one concern that we hear from our citizens. I think we have done a lot of good things that we are positioned to move Marion forward in a very exciting way. Four things that I've really been focusing on as I've been talking with a variety of groups across the community. Number one is fiscal responsibility. Because the number one job of the City Council is managing the budget that we approve every year. Which at the end of the day is managing how we spend the property tax dollars. That everyone in this room works hard to earn those dollars and then to pay the taxes in our community. So it does not make sense to talk about any of the other issues that I'm going to say are important to me. Unless we stay focused on making sure that we remain in an affordable community to live in and affordable community to do business in. So we always have to stay focused on funding things in a way that is not to the detriment of the taxpayers. My second important thing is community development. I talked about the importance of streets in the community. And we've invested a lot of dollars over the last four years in major infrastructure improvements. Whether it be main arterials like South 31st Street, North 35th Street, 10th Street, Connection Avenue. Some big roads that allow our growing residential neighborhoods to be better connected. We've also increased the amount of money that we spend on residential streets. And we need to continue to do that. When we talk about community development, we talk about the Central Corridor project, which I believe is about two things. One, the job of the city is to provide the infrastructure in the area. And that's what we're doing with the streetscape, with the improved road transportation network. And the second thing is to do that in a way that creates an environment that allows businesses to grow, to be successful. And creates an environment that makes new businesses want to locate our community. We've already started to see that with, I believe, three new businesses in the Uptown. You have the toy store, you have Ramses, the chocolate shop, if you look out this window. They're investing in Uptown Marion. It's extremely exciting. On the east end of our corridor, we have a new $22 million redevelopment project that was just announced in the last couple of weeks. Those are the kinds of things that as we have put this plan in place, we are starting to see developers, small business owners, excited about investing in our corridor. So we have to remain focused on that. We've worked with the business community over the last several years. And we have to continue to do that to make sure that the businesses that have invested here can remain vibrant here. A lot of times, the City Council has said that, no, you don't care about business. You're just, you know, important about doing fun, pretty things for the community. But when you understand how we fund these things and how we grow as a community, small business is what does that. And so we have to do it in a way that allows small businesses to succeed. The other thing in community development is some of the more, we call it quality of life issues, are imaginative initiatives. We'll talk about those, I hope, later on in this hour because they're very exciting. Number three is economic vitality. We've talked about attracting business. And number four is community engagement. Because from a communications background, I believe that as we talk about all these things, we have to remain engaged with communicating them back to people like you that are here today. So that when the council makes a decision, we also tell you, here's why we believe this is the best decision. Here's why we spent your money on this. Because in a growing community, people need to be informed as far as how your dollars are being spent. So that is a big focus for me. So those are the issues. This is a very exciting time to be in our community. And I thank you for being here today.
Thank you. Okay, now we're, this question will start with Mr. Glue. And then Snooks will be, or Mr. Buska will be given the opportunity to answer it afterward. Mr. Glue, please share your views regarding local option sales tax.
Okay, well, as you know, we currently have a local option sales tax that the citizens approved, is that three years ago now, I believe? So it's a five-year tax that we're in the middle of. And if you follow what's going on across the metro area, this is something that is brought forth to the voters again. It's Cedar Rapids being the largest community in Lynn County is the, is the community that would decide if we're going to vote on that. We literally have no say as to whether or not our voters will go to the polls. Local option sales tax is, if you look at what we spend this money on, the majority of it is infrastructure. And the latest plan that we had put forth recently was property tax relief. My argue is that all the local option sales tax is property tax relief. Because when we look at how much of a draw our community in the metro area is. People come to our community to work. They come to our community to spend money. They come to our community for entertainment and they use our infrastructure. They drive on our roads, they use our sewers, but they don't ever pay for them. And so being the regional draw that we are, local option sales tax is the only way to get people who come and use our infrastructure to help pay for it. Projects that we find have local option sales tax, 30, it's a little bit more than 30% of that money comes from people outside of our community. So it's a way to diversify our.
Time.
Our, we are in time, aren't we?
Yep. Yes, I have.
Thank you.
Mr. Buska, please share your views regarding local option sales tax.
Certainly. Back me up with Nick on that. But I think what we'll have to do is find out where this money is spent. This money comes from offers. And it seems that we don't have accountability for the taxes that have been spent. And they haven't spent. We all put down where they should go, but we need to find out where they have gone. And that is a difficult situation. We've come down to see all looking for these numbers. And it's a tough, it's a tough show. We really need the accountability on this, a local option, to say exactly where it's coming, where they say and where we say it's coming. Other than, other than that, we should, we should just invest this money very, very wisely. Because it's, it's a one-time shot.
Thank you. Mr. Buska, it sounds as though there will be another local option sales tax vote in our future. What projects would you suggest be funded out of future local option sales tax revenues?
I think the infrastructures, infrastructure for streets, sewers, and water. We need, we need more water downtown. We love to have some expansion downtown, some large venues. But we need water pressure down here to make it work. That's part of the, that's part of the situation for the infrastructure. Streets, 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 always streets. There's people that have problems with sewer when it rains. And there's these people have flooded basements over and over again, around 10th, 10th Street North. The Country Club and McGowan in that particular area. So let's, you know, concentrate on those, okay? Let's fix these, fix these things. If we got the money, let's get it done and get it done right and get it done now. Thank you.
Mr. Glue, you need to repeat the question.
Sure.
Okay. It sounds as though there will be another local option sales tax vote in our future. What projects would you suggest be funded out of future local option sales tax revenues?
And again, it sounds like if there's going to be means, I think, you know, we've been hearing that Cedar Rapids is going to bring this score. So again, we won't have a decision whether or not we're going to put it forth or not as the Marion community. But number one, again, is streets, infrastructure. And the plan that we had put forth for the last vote that was predominantly streets. We know that that is, we can never spend enough money on streets. And so that's, that's got to be number one. I think number two, since it is a new, it's a revenue source different than property taxes. And we talk about the revenue coming from outside of our community. I think it's important to designate a certain amount of that money to reduce the property taxes that we pay here in our community. So it's important for us to not look at it and say, oh, it's a new revenue source, so we spend more money. I think we've got to offset what we pay as local property taxpayers with that money. And then the other thing is we have some very critical facility improvements coming up. You hear about our library project. We have one of the busiest libraries in the state of Iowa. Some of those projects, we have a need long-term for making sure we're planning to make sure our police station is funded. And mainly roads. It really is all about roads. Because that's the kind of thing, this plan is supported by voters. The plan we put out has to be approved by voters. And then we're held accountable how we spend that by the state of Iowa. So the voters say roads, I support roads 100% as the majority of that money.
Okay.
Great.
Okay, Mr. Glue, this, you will go first on this question. In your opinion, what can be done to offset the gap between commercial and residential property taxes?
Attract more business. Marion is 80% residential right now. When you look at how our tax base is made up, 80% of our tax base is homes. And if you understand how property taxes work, you also understand that while we all pay a lot of money in property taxes, with the system we have in place, we have to grow business and industry. One, it provides jobs for the people that live here. But two, it makes it more affordable for everyone to live here. So we have done, we have put some aggressive plans in place to bring some industrial and commercial sites online. So that we are positioned as the economy continues and hopefully gains steam to turn around. I would put the city of Marion at the top of the list as far as position for attracting new economic growth for our community. So we have to remain focused on those initiatives. It's just as important for the school districts as we look at how we fund our schools. We have to grow business in our community in order to be affordable and just in order to remain vibrant long-term as we continue to grow.
Thank you. Mr. Buska, would you like me to repeat the question?
That's correct. The emphasis is on attracting business. We've got Highway 100 down there that just has been sitting for years. Things have been going on down there. That's a tremendous opportunity for advancement for this particular city. If we could, if we could have some success down in that particular area, make all the difference in the world. We've got that Highway 100, we've got all that land down there. We really need to have that developed. The whole strength of the city down in the South really needs to be developed. Up North, you've got the Tower Terrace situation. We've got opportunities for businesses there. Along the Medco situation. We've had, we've had Medco enforced for years and we haven't really had much success attracting businesses. I think the City Council has to really get involved with this. Medco some more and find out why we haven't been able to attract people here. Maybe we need some, maybe we need a change in leadership. But we need something really, we need a positive in this Medco situation to really make this thing go. Myself, I pay a tremendous amount of taxes and I wonder, you know, on my business and properties. And I'd love to see those come down a little bit. But we really do need more to alleviate these homeowner tax situations.
Mr. Buska, you will go first on this question. How will you work through our local economic development organizations to recruit, retain, and promote local business?
I think that, I think we need perhaps another PR program. We need something to get out there to get people. And looking at the, and looking at the amount of calls and viability that's been going on for the past several years. I think we really need emphasis out there. We don't need people to call us, we need to call them. We need the outreach, we need to, we need to focus attracting these businesses. I know it's a, it's a real pitfall when you say, okay, we're going to tip these people here and tip them there. And then when five years or 10 years is up, they're gone and you're out. We need to, we need to really go full bore on this with a program. You want to outreach and find these people, not let these people come here.
You know, we have been working on this. And it is a hard thing because states across the entire country are desperate to land some of these big economic development projects right now. We looked at a project, you know, probably six months ago at this point. And the incentive package that, that we were offering, I think, made everyone in the City Council uncomfortable. But the fact of the matter was, we knew that there were at least two other states that were offering incentive packages that made ours look like pennies. And so it's competitive out there. So I think what we need to do is focus on identifying what makes Marion the place that people want to locate. Identify what those are and market those. And work together with other economic development entities across the region. Because we can't, Medco alone can't drive economic development. Economic development is, in some regards, a community initiative. It's working together to create the environment. It's working together to market our community. It's making Marion the place that businesses want to be. Not making it a place that we have to spend millions and millions of dollars to convince them this is where they want to be. So it's competitive out there. It is about a lot of marketing, which we just looked at the Medco's marketing plan for marketing some of our industrial sites. And we're continuing to put pressure on that organization. We've got to keep working hard because it's not a short race, it's a long journey.
Thank you. Again, Mr. Glue, explain your stance on using TIPS to support public and private projects.
Okay. I'll use the example of the project that I was discussing earlier, which is the development between 31st Street and 35th Street along 7th Avenue. We had a project that was submitted to us. It's a major redevelopment project for that, pretty much that entire complex. Aside from the Gilchrist Stewitt lumberyard that sits on the corner. Virtually all those buildings will be removed and redeveloped with high-quality, high-quality buildings, high-quality companies. Small businesses will remain, but are there today. And they're working aggressively to bring new tenants to the, to the community. It's a very exciting project. That's a project where they came to the City Council. They said, this is the, this is the amount of money that we're going to invest in this property, which is significantly higher than what that property is taxed at today. So what we do as the City Council is we say, that increase in taxes that we will collect as a, as a part of this development, we're willing to give you some of that increase back. So that it makes this project affordable. The city is still ahead on tax dollars. We're not losing any money. We're not giving money away. Because at the end of the day, if the development's not happening, you know, nobody wins. So I am in support of using those for those commercial industrial projects. And I think it's an important economic development tool that we'll continue to see utilized as we redevelop the corridor and grow that. And grow some of the other industrial areas in our community.
Mr. Buska, explain your stance on using TIPS to support public and private projects, please.
I think the situation that you just talked about down there at Gilchrist Stewitt or the Orsland Shopping Center is a tremendous, what an opportunity. or the Orsland Shopping Center, is a tremendous, what an opportunity. I mean, that is, that's an opportunity that is not going to leave this town. We tip those, we tip those, that organization, we tip those builders, those buildings are going to stay, those tenants are going to stay. That's going to be a tremendous stepping stone for this community, and in my opinion, that's just the start of this whole corridor, 7th Avenue project. We're starting on the east, and this, this whole thing can just roll right up on 7th Avenue to the west, starting with that particular situation. It's, it's fabulous, and we're really glad to see that.
Thank you. Mr. Buska, please give some specific examples of how you have been a contributing citizen of the Marion community in the past through volunteerism or serving on civic committees or boards.
Working seven days a week, we really haven't had that opportunity to work on boards or things like that, a family business, and I, what I just talked about, I was down operating that store, one store for seven days a week, and the other, we do, however, contribute monetarily or with product to all types of youth groups or nonprofits. And with this company that I'm operating right now, it's a wholesale company that provides ice cream products, and it's a, it's a, it's a great fundraiser for any nonprofit in the, in the area. We've contributed to city and educational groups throughout the years, a notable amount of monies, and easily in a small unmarked Dairy Queen bank. So we've, we've really been proud of what we've done, and I'm, I'm most happy for this. Thanks.
Mr. Blue, please give some specific examples of how you have been a contributing citizen of the Marion community in the past through volunteerism or serving on civic committees or boards.
This is an area, this is an area where my wife often says, "Please slow down." I currently am president of the Marion Cedar Rapids Rotary Club, which many of you are probably familiar with Rotary and the good work that is done in communities around the world with that. Just past vice president of the Willis-Dade Emergency Shelter, which is a homeless shelter for men and families in Cedar Rapids community, a member of the Four Oaks Community Engagement Committee in Cedar Rapids. We talked about our Imagine It Visioning process, which I think is one of the most important civic groups that has really happened. I was one of the founding members of that, of that process. I remember going up to the Dubuque community when we didn't even know what we wanted to do and saying, "How did you do your visioning process?" And we helped bring that to this community. I also was on the Great Places Steering Committee, which led to our designation that the city of Marion has a great place for the state of Iowa, which has meant additional resources from the state for a lot of our quality of life issues. I'm actively involved in our church as a worship leader, and I graduated the Leadership for Five Seasons program in 2008, and a 40 under 40 honorary by the Corridor Business Journal, I believe that was in 2007 or 2008, so. And really, that's what gets me excited about our community. That's what forms relationships and very important to be involved in.
Thank you. Nick, Mr. Blue, what makes you a qualified candidate for Marion's next mayor?
It's kind of funny, because we have, not funny, but it's, it is a little bit laughable. Four-year terms is what we have as members of our city council, and I truly feel it takes at least three times through the budget process to feel like you have a grasp of how our budget operates and truly how our city is funded. And there's so many different, whether you're talking to school or city or whatever governmental entity there is, there's so many different buckets of funding that have to be used for this, and this comes from here, and working those, how those work together, it takes a while to understand the budget, which again is the number one thing we do. And so I think the experience over the last four years is what qualifies me to be mayor. Plus, I'm very plugged into the community, I have great relationships with our business community, a lot of the things that we've worked on, and progress is controversial, and progress gets a lot of working together. And I think we, I have proven, and that working together is something that I want to do. I mean, that's why we're here as an elected person, is to represent what the community's desires are. And so I think relationships is another important thing, a variety of relationships with a variety of organizations that makes me best qualified to be mayor of the city of Marion.
Thank you. Mr. Buska, what makes you a qualified candidate for Marion's next mayor?
I think the expertise that I've shown in, in my business, in the businesses that I've operated, budgets that I've run, with, it's funny, in a, in a business, you have to operate within your budget. Hopefully, you can operate within your budget in the city. But I think, I'm bringing in a second set of eyes here to the, to the community with a strong business background. When I was in the military, I, even though it was a part-time position, I operated a $10 million budget through the Navy. I don't know why, from here in Cedar Rapids. So I've had some very, very large budgets, and I've always monitored them very closely. I think that the business, the background that I have will ensure that with the leadership that I've shown in the past, we'll get this city on its track.
Thank you. Mr. Buska, what is your view on the corridor redevelopment plan, and if elected mayor, what will you do to ensure the project stays on task?
Do I get a phone on this one and ask something? Really, the corridor project, it's, it's something that's needed. I just feel that we got off the wrong foot on the very start with this, without including the, the businesses on 7th Avenue. We could have done a lot better job, the city could have done a lot better job promoting this situation. We didn't find out about it until it was virtually decided, and then it was, it wasn't, we feel that it wasn't properly planned or executed, there was traffic studies and this and that. I feel that the plan, this, this plan should continue, although I feel that there's different, different ways of doing that. I think we need to remove all these, all the roundabouts in this 7th Avenue project. I think we need to keep 7th Avenue open through, not restricted at all. We restrict 7th Avenue, we're going to restrict the traffic that these individuals, including us, have all invested in. While the city was planning on the 7th Avenue corridor project initially on the east end, over $6 million of private investment money was spent in six months alone upgrading the businesses and the buy-sells along 7th Avenue.
Mr. Blue, what is your view on the corridor redevelopment plan, and if elected mayor, what will you do to ensure the project stays on task?
I think the Central Corridor Plan is a plan that, as we look at it, it's not a plan for today, it's a 20, 30-year plan for positioning our community for success and growth long-term into the future. We have, I don't know if this is the right word to call it, I call it once-in-a-generation or once-in-a-lifetime type of choice, where we have roads that need improvements, and we also have a significant amount of property that is ready to be redeveloped. This is a process that, if you go back to our master plan that was originally approved in, I think, late 2009, ever since leading up to that and through, and we'll disagree on this, but we have remained engaged with the business community. We focus on how we can improve, how we communicate with stakeholders throughout the community. And even to this day, the city council was presented last night with, with a, something that will be shown at the, there's an open house this afternoon on this project, I think it's in this room actually. There are still changes being made to the plan to continue to address concerns of business owners, when we talk about access, when we talk about traffic flow. A lot of the things we hear is, "We don't want one-way streets, there are no one-way streets. We don't want to close 7th Avenue." You'll see this afternoon, we're not closing 7th Avenue. There's a lot of concerns that we have addressed and must continue to address as we move forward, because again, this project is about investing the infrastructure and to create the environment for businesses to be successful.
Mr. Blue, please share your thoughts about the construction of Tower Terrace Road.
Tower Terrace Road and the Central Corridor are the top two priority infrastructure projects for our community. One, for anyone that lives anywhere north of here, you know that from a, from a connectivity standpoint, we are far behind. We need to figure out ways to get people with all the rooftops in that part of the corridor, east and west across the entire metro area. It is a project that really is our first opportunity to open up new, new commercial development on that side of town. You'll see that we're actually building the first section of Tower Terrace Road right now between 10th Street and Albertan Road. That's because of a significant investment by a private company in that area. Esco Electric will be moving out there, and I think you're going to see Marion probably build a section of Tower Terrace Road before you're going to see the rest of the metro area. But collectively, Cedar Rapids, Lynn County, Hiawatha, Robbins, and Marion are working together to move this project forward, because it is very important to continue to allow growth to occur along that northern side of the metro area, so I support it highly.
Thank you. Mr. Buska, please share your thoughts about the construction of Tower Terrace Road.
We're on the same page here. This is, this is a core project. I, I, I think that all the funding that could possibly be found and subjected to this particular project should be done. It's, it's very, very, very important, from economics to housing to transportation. I, I wish that Cedar Rapids was as far along as we are on this particular project. I know that Hiawatha's been trying for years to get a off-ramp at Tower Terrace, and they're continuing. Hopefully, it'll be done when it does, and we're off, but we're first.
Thank you. Mr. Buska, do you think a library expansion is needed, and how should it be funded?
I don't know how, I'm not sure how funding would come, but it's something that has to be done. A library, this library is extremely important and always has been. I've been a supporter of this library since its inception, but a library...